You're all set.
Are we on?
Yeah.
Let's go, let's go.
Okay, this is the meeting, August 7th, 2020, for the Shawshank Valley Technical School District School Committee. I guess I'll read this. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 38, Section 18, the governor's March 15th, 2020 imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Shawshank Valley Regional Vocational and Technical School District Committee will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting may do so by accessing the meeting link. No in-person attendance of members of the public are permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Shawshank website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. All right, the members who are attending. I'm sorry, Paul Geddick from Burlington, Kent Moffett, Nancy Esbedian, Taryn Gillis, Lisa Gallagher, Ron Fusco, Fusco, and me, Patricia Muse. And I don't think I missed anybody, did I? And Brad Jackson, the superintendent, and Jess Cook, the principal, is also in attendance.
Madam Chair, can I just ask, I was asked this by members of the public, are we going to have public comment? And if so, how can they call in?
I believe we're supposed to. I had asked Brad if this was possible, and there was supposed to be an email address, Brad?
Yes, we're going to include it in the presentation is my email address, and people during the question and answer period are going to be invited to email me questions, which I'll read and do our best to answer during the live portion of this presentation. And that, that email address will be, I'm going to review it as part of the presentation in several places.
Okay, and you did receive the list of questions I sent to you and the chairperson earlier, right?
The comments and the questions, yes.
Yes, we did.
Okay, great, thank you.
How much public time, Brad, are we given?
I would say, I, I, I would like to limit it. I mean, I would really like to limit it, I don't know, 15 minutes, maybe.
I would agree with that, Patty.
You know, and then if people have questions after that, they can send them to the superintendent, and he can answer them, or email me. And I will tell you, my email, I know a lot of people might be using the Shaw Tech, but because I'm not technologically, I haven't been able to get into my Shawshank Tech email for a long time.
We gotta get that fixed.
Right.
I'll tell you, I was having trouble with my iPad, and I went, I talked to Scott Ialuna, and he was able to really help me fix all the issues.
Yes.
So that's. I think, I think we need to do something, Patty, about that. I think between the iPads and the, you know, the Circus Pros, we need to have like one night where Scott comes in and goes over all that with us, because I.
That would be great.
Yeah, because I'm, I, I don't want people really, I mean, you can reach out to the email address that I have in file with the town of Tewksbury, but honestly, I, I would rather go through the, the tech. And as far as the questions are concerned, when those come through, Dr. Jackson and yourself, is, is it possible that any questions and answers get kind of trickled down to the school committee members, so we know what's out there and what's been asked and answered?
Sure.
Thank you.
They're going to be, they're going to be done in real time as part of this meeting as well, the ones that we get during the meeting.
Patty?
Yes.
Was the public session on the agenda?
Uh, it actually just says the reopening plan.
Yeah, but you have to have it on the agenda.
Yeah, but she can move to, she can move to put that on.
Now, you can't, no. It has to be on the agenda.
I don't see it, there's no public.
But as a live, as a live, regular school committee meeting, I think we always have public.
I don't know, that is, is Howard on, is Howard with this?
Howard's going to be on this call.
Howard, do you have a comment?
If, if the only issue is that the public participation isn't on the agenda, but everything else is okay, I, I can't see there'd be a huge problem with that.
Okay. Just curious, I don't want to.
So you could take, you could take public comment, Howard, even though it's not on the agenda.
Right.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so the superintendent is up with his fall 2020 reopening plan.
Thank you very much. Now, I'm going to try to share my screen. And it may not work, but we'll see, I may have to go into, so is that?
Got it.
Yeah.
I have it, yeah.
Does everybody see the slides?
Yes.
I have it, yeah.
Yes.
So, um, thank you for the opportunity to present our reopening plan today, Ms. Cook, the principal, and I will be reviewing these, this slide deck, there's about 26 slides, we'll be doing it as, as efficiently as possible, understanding that there are a lot of moving parts to this, but not only to this presentation, but to this plan. We will be, um, we will be, I'm going to try to make ones, I'll change, that's better. We will, we are, this is going to be two pieces to this agenda. One is a recommendation being presented to the school committee that we reopen this fall under the hybrid model. We're going to review the process and information that led to that recommendation, entertain questions from the committee. We will then entertain any questions from the public during the live session only. Obviously, if you're viewing this on YouTube as a not live, it's being, it is now 12:11 PM on, on Friday, August 7th, so if you're not viewing this live, this option will not be available to you to have live your questions answered live, but you can always email me at my email address included here, whether live or not. And then there'll be committee question and vote. And if committee members, for this part of the presentation, if committee members know how to and are able to mute themselves, it would probably improve the quality of the presence, the ability for the public to hear the presentation. Next, we'll review the recommendation for modification of the school calendar and follow the same process. So, and on June 25th, 2020, five or six days before I joined the Shawshank, Shawshank as the new superintendent director, DESI submitted its initial fall school reopening guidance with the goal of the safe return of as many students as possible to in-person school settings to maximize learning and address our students' holistic needs. And we were instructed to prepare three plans. And a full reopen, a hybrid reopen, and a remote reopen, where full is all students physically attend schools while observing social distancing and other guy, and other safety guideline. A hybrid reopening where we have some students in and some students learning remotely, and 100% remote, obviously, where 100% of our students attend school remotely. But the remote learning would have stricter expectations for student performance, participation, and obviously graded work. DESI in, as indicated, their order of preference to be, they prefer full remote, if you can't do full remote, to go to hybrid, and if you feel hybrid is untenable for you, then, then it only then should you move to remote open. As soon as I arrived, I gathered the, the administrative team and formed a reopening planning team that consisted of myself, Ms. Hagman, the assistant superintendent, Ms. Cook, and these, and all of the members of the full-time administrative team, full-year administrative team of Shawshank, Ms. Fusco, et cetera. I also, I added Jeff Albert's name to this, although he has not up to this point in time participated in the planning, because his start date does, his start date is Monday. And then recently, we added our school nurse and two folks from our School of Practical Nursing, Pat Noonan and Carol Butts, Carol's former longtime school nurse, the Bill Rick of Public Schools, and we added them kind of as a medical consultant, if you will, to the group. The, this work has been a constant challenge of our attempt to hit a moving target with guidance coming at us on almost certainly every other day basis. Since we received the initial school guidance on June 25th, special ed guidance, very, very important reopening facilities and operations guidance and transportation guidance, which we didn't receive until about two weeks ago. Then on July 27th, we were notified that we, the state had inserted, had modified and include, modified their school year requirements to, and added, signed an agreement statewide with the unions to add 10 staff training days. And then on July 29th, which is essentially about a week ago, a little more than a week ago, they finally published the Career and Vocational Technical Education reopening guidance. So we have been working as hard and as focused as we possibly can to, to hit this moving target. I, I have to tell you that, as you are all aware, and hopefully you've seen evidence of this in the way that we conduct this search for the Student Services Director, I, I value parent input at a very high level. Given the fact that we didn't begin this, most school districts began this process of planning back in May, and given the fact that I didn't start until July 1st, and where, when we began the planning process as soon as I arrived, unfortunately, we were, we did not have the infrastructure in place of, of a joint committee like other school districts did, and that, I think, is unfortunate, but, but a circumstance that, that, with which, you know, we've had to deal. I, and we have, however, and I'll show you through the process, had opportunities to bring teachers in to get their input. So our first step was bringing forward, was to assess the full reopen model. In their June, June 25th guidance, DESI included a lot of physical distancing guidelines, and we set about the task of assessing all of our instructional spaces and our core operational spaces, such as our auditorium, which is currently closed due to it needing, ceiling needing repairs, cafeteria, et cetera. And we invited teachers to participate in the assessment of their space. Ms. Cook met with the academic teachers and physically walked into their classroom with a measuring stick, talked about options to accommodate students, meet the needs, and meet the physical distancing requirements that DESI had brought forward. We, DES included in their guidance was, was some recommendations that basically that we, oh, and before I go to that, and Mr. Norkowitz did the same for the shops, with the shop teachers coming in and reviewing their space with him. In both cases, we were looking for opportunities to expand space, to make, to maximize the space where we could, for students within a classroom, prioritize it as a core instructional space. There's a lot of superfluous furniture and equipment, particularly in academic classrooms, that we have identified for removal to maximize the capacity of our classrooms and the safety of our students, and to maximize the distance between students. And we're moving materials stored in classrooms to separate class storage, and then basically working with teachers developed a consensus as to the room space and capacity. Unfortunately, we have concluded that the full reopen option is simply not implementable. We have six shops that do not have adequate space or design to accommodate two grades of students simultaneously and meet the current physical distancing guidelines, and those six shops are listed here. In addition, there are a number of shops that would require significant physical modification that frankly, we, the summer is too short a period to get that done, would require more outside work than we traditionally do, and which would begin to impact where weather could, and unfortunately, triple E could have an impact on that, and would require increased access, student access to clinicals in the, in the health areas, which at this point in time, clinicals are not being, are not being opened by the state for that group, which makes those spaces, those shop spaces under, undersized. So, again, we concluded it's not implementable. In addition, there were some guidelines issued later in the month on physical distancing on buses that impacts our ability to use our, to utilize our current fleet to, to transport all four grades, and, and also the physical distancing requirements that convert essentially a 12-foot-long cafeteria table that has a current capacity, seating capacity of 10 to 12 students can now only fit four, and trying to figure out a way to safely allow students time to eat in our cafeteria when all of our students are in the building is just physically not possible. That being said, we did, both our academic and our shops are being decluttered to allow for adequate class sizes and meet the DESI physical guidelines, so that we can pivot to the remote, we can pivot to the remote option, which allowed us to then pivot to the remote option, and, excuse me, to the hybrid option. And at this point in time, Jess, if you could walk the committee through these next slides to describe our work around the hybrid model, specifics about it, and just, I'll drive the presentation from my, from my station, however, so just tell me when you're ready to move slide to slide.
Thank you. So with the hybrid model, we did do some collaboration with other administrators in the state at CTE schools. There are various groups that meet remotely week to week. There are some that I meet with, some that Norkowitz meets with, and so having a sense of, you know, where other schools were going in terms of how they were setting up their schedules was definitely a piece of it, and having our core planning team really look at it and, and, and try to poke holes in what we're coming up with, and then meeting with each of the departments, have them take a look and give some feedback. And the biggest piece for us, though, was not necessarily doing what all other schools do, although there are a lot of similarities, but it was to come up with a hybrid schedule that was driven by our priorities. Next slide, please, Dr. Jackson. So before we bring up the visual here, these are some of the things that I'm going to talk about when describing what the schedule looks like. So first and foremost, health and safety, being able to adhere to that guidance. So you'll see when I bring the schedule up that we have nine and 12 in the building at any given time, and 10 and 11 in the building at any given time, with the idea that ninth and 10th graders are the most likely to take the bus, so never having them in the building at the same time, which allows us to have as many 12th and 11th graders who are able to drive have space to park, since 11th and 12th graders won't be here at the same time. We also knew we wanted face-to-face time in the building every week. We didn't want to do week on, week off. We helped, we believe that that'll help students be more consistent in engaging in the remote piece. We wanted a schedule that'll allow flexibility to support high-need students, which we'll talk a little bit more about later in the presentation. We still wanted to preserve student access to a range of course offerings, and the schedule we've come up with allows us to still follow our full, our normal schedule along with our core schedule that we have out for the coming school year. And we wanted to have authentic, time for authentic work in our shops. So you'll see that some schools are doing like an every-other-day hybrid, and we have ours grouped in blocks, so that if students are doing projects, they don't have to tear everything down at the end of every day. And allows us to be adaptable with our exploratory program, which we'll go into more depth at a later slide. The way we've set it up, it doesn't get in the way of students who are on co-op, and allows us to leave elements of our structure and routines that students are familiar with. So if we move to the next slide, you can see this in a bit more depth. So we've taken our normal week one, week two schedule, and we've broken it out over four weeks. This first view shows what each week looks like, and when we're done talking about this, you can get a grade level perspective. And so on a week one A or one B, nine and 11 are still in academics, and 10 and 12 are in shop like they're used to, and the flip is still true on a week two. And if we just, for the moment, we'll look at one A, so when ninth graders are in school for academics, which on a week one A they are, Monday through Wednesday, 11th graders are remote for academics, and then Thursday, Friday of that week, it switches. But we didn't want some students to always, always have three days in while others have two, so two weeks later on a week one B, it'll be the opposite. Ninth graders will be remote three days for academics, while 11th graders will be in person for three days for academics. And then you'll see the same flip-flop happens for 10th and 12th graders, whether they are on a shop or an academic week as well. So that's what that looks like there. And so by doing this, if a senior is out on co-op, because we're preserving our, our week schedule, they would simply just report to co-op the entirety of a week one A or one B. They wouldn't have to log in remotely on a shop week, so that would preserve their schedule. We would also still follow our Course and Bell schedule, periods one through eight. It was important to me that no teacher be scheduled to be in charge of an in-person and a remote class at the same time. And so if I am a teacher who teaches grades nine and 11, let's say in the morning I have ninth graders, the afternoon I have 11, I can be fully present in each of those course periods, because I'm not double booked. So that was important to us as well. And the, if we move on to the next slide, you can get a sense over the four weeks of what it looks like for a student in any given grade. So this shows you the, the structure for grades nine, 10, 11, and 12. And, and we wanted it so there was no five-day span where a student was, you know, going to be fully out between a Thursday, Friday to Monday, Wednesday, but that's inevitable in any schedule. So if I'm a ninth grader, you know, I know, hey, this is what my, my rotating schedule looks like every four weeks, actually labeled the one As, two As on the calendar as well. Staff also know what their schedule would look like over the weeks, and so we'll talk about professional development a little bit more later, but they'll be able to plan their lessons out to maximize the use of face-to-face time and appropriately structure remote learning time around what is most suitable for students to do during that time.
Jess, can I ask you a question? Will students be moving from class to class, or are they going to be in a classroom all day and the teachers are going to rotate?
So the way we have it now is that students would be moving class to class. We don't have them coordinated on the academic side. I don't know, Dr. Jackson, if you want to add anything in there?
Yeah, I would just, I would, because I did have somebody ask me a question about if they are going to be moving class to class and how that's going to be sanitized in between, you know, classes and things like that. Have you thought that far ahead or no?
We have, we have, we have thought that far ahead, to the point where we recognize that we either have to modify our academic schedule to create more sub, some, some more, some smaller cohorts of students, which essentially would require us as best Jess and I can come up with is, would require us to, to reduce the number of levels we offer on academics. And that would allow us to create some cohorts of students who could perhaps have, stay in one place and have teachers move in and out. The other alternative, which is if we stick with the current schedule and the level of, number of levels that we have in our current course of studies, the, the DESI guidance does, does offer us a, a plan, not a plan, but a requirement to ensure that desks are sanitized by, by students or custodial staff prior to use if students are moving within the day.
Because I can tell you right now that I, you know, if my child has an autoimmune disease or anything like that, I mean, I, I wouldn't want them wiping down desks or chairs or, or anything like that. I mean, I have some concerns about that, and I, and I wouldn't expect the teachers to be doing that either, so.
I didn't, I wasn't suggesting that teachers. DESI guidance, students are, students are custodial staff.
So my, my students, both of my kids are going to be custodial now? I didn't catch that, because you kind of cut out.
I said students or custodial staff.
Or custodial, okay, great, thank you.
Jess?
So, um, I'm going to move on to the, to the next couple of slides to give more perspective on what things would look like within that schedule. So we are returning to the rigor and expectation that we would in a normal school year. You know, the spring remote learning period was an emergency remote learning period where we modified our, our grading and our attendance expectations, but we are moving back to having those expectations. So the, during the remote learning piece, students will be expected to sign in, will be using Microsoft Teams, and they'll be training for staff and parents around that, and then teachers will take Aspen, still sign in each period, we will take formal attendance. And it doesn't mean that teachers will necessarily lecture all period, every, every eight period of the day. There may be times that they're having students work in groups, or students are doing some independent work and checking in, but we need students available and tune in during the normal school schedule. They, they can't be doing work at 10 o'clock at night and, and, and off the school schedule, like sometimes happen during that remote period. For the, in terms of the one alteration of the day, we're working on plans to do a staggered drop-off in the morning over the course of our traditional homeroom period for students in the building. We wouldn't make students from home log in during that homeroom time, they'd be able to log in right with the first period. And in terms of grading, we would move away from the credit, no credit we did for quarter four when we were remote and return to a normal grading structure. And a big focus of the professional development time we aim to use is to have staff work in their departments on how to structure curriculum and instruction to maximize that face-to-face time with students, and be giving reasonable and accessible work when students are connecting remotely. One alteration in this plan is on the shop side, since the types of assignments given remotely in a lot of settings will likely be more project-based, we're not necessarily going to require the students and staff to be sitting in teams with each other the whole school day. Every student will have to check in, in the morning, and then there'll probably be scheduled times a day, it will differ shop to shop depending on the type of work that they check in, and then we can utilize those staff members to give more attention to the students in shop that day, and really maximize the use of that time. And the one thing we're, we're working on will just be a code of conduct for expectations for remote participation, just to ensure that, you know, that is also a safe learning space, just like we would when we're face-to-face at school.
Jess, can I ask, has the DESI put any guidance out to IEPs and how those are going to be complied with during remote learning sessions? I mean, if we're not, I mean, if, if somebody needs assistance in the classroom and, you know, they're not there, I mean, how, how are we going to work with that, complying with IEPs?
Sure, I bring that up in the slide after this one, so if you're okay, if I can speak to that after we get through. So if you're okay, if I can speak to that after we get through.
Yeah, no worries.
That's great. Thank you. So on the vocational side, we definitely have some considerations that are comprehensive districts. But the one that is rises to the top is around exploratory for ninth graders. Recognizing in our switch of the schedule, some students would explore certain shops only face-to-face for two days, while other shops for three days. So one thing that Mr. Norwood will be working with his programs on is coming up with a consistent rubric to assess students in exploratory, so that a student who's in on a three-day schedule in person doesn't receive an advantage in getting into a shop over a student in it for two days. The other thing that we're going to do is we're going to extend our exploratory program to roughly 14 to 15 weeks instead of just 12. This offers a few advantages if we're suddenly shut down for a period of time and then come back. It means that students will still have the opportunity to explore their top choices. We're also going to, and it's never, I can't guarantee until it's done that it'll be 100% to the extent possible to get students in their top choice shops in the first month or so of school, so that students can get in and explore those programs. And then with this extended schedule, if a student misses school for some period of time for some reason, again, there's a longer time in the school year for them to be able to participate in that. It also means that we can have the same number of students cycled for each shop without maximizing the number of students in a shop on any given cycle. And that just makes the experience a bit safer. And again, more targeted instruction with fewer numbers of students in there at any given time. So we will be communicating more information as we make this more robust around the exploratory piece. But we know how important this is to our incoming ninth graders and really want to deliver a sound experience. The other big question is around co-op. So per the guidance that came out July 29th, co-op can continue for eligible grade 12 students in according with the safety guidance they have put out. Our co-op office has been working proactively this summer and will continue to do so with our employers to make sure they are compliant with health and safety requirements where our students will be. And that communication and oversight with the co-op office and, you know, the work of our vocational teachers who are very much involved will happen to make sure that students have a safe experience when out on co-op. Next slide, please. Thank you. Earlier clinicals were mentioned, so per that same guidance from DESI, clinical assignments are not anticipated for at least the first few months of school since the clinical sites for the health careers are not currently accepting students due to COVID-related concerns. But we look to, when it's safe to do so, obviously get back in there, but that'll be on a TBD basis. The guidance also had very specific information for what they're referring to as service-related programs. So those are our programs that have external customers, so folks not just in the building and interactions with the public. So specifically guidance was given on culinary, graphics, automotive, automotive collision, and cosmetology. And so we're adopting procedures for every single one of our shops. And that's happening with Mr. Norwood's again, in conjunction with the teachers in those shops to prioritize safety just around movement in the shop, how we're cleaning tools that are shared. But on top of that, we'll be using this very specific guidance to determine how we'll be running those programs. So for example, you know, we can't run our traditional restaurants for culinary arts, but one of the suggestions in the guidance is maybe doing a curbside pickup program. So those are the specifics that we'll be working out for each of those programs to ensure safety. And as I, as I mentioned, I jumped ahead, these individual shop considerations. You know, we're going to have separate plans for each of these spaces. Next slide. So this is where I'll start to talk about students who are on IEPs. And we'll be very transparent. A lot of the planning is going to happen starting Monday when Jeff Albert joins us as our new director of support services. Next two slides get to what DESI has allowed for 100% in-person learning. So they have asked districts to prioritize full-time in-person instruction and to the extent it's safe and feasible to do so for the populations listed here. Students with disabilities and English language learners, students who don't have access to reliable internet or experiencing homelessness, housing insecurity, foster care, students who are significantly behind academically, who have struggled with remote learning in the past, or early learners, which doesn't apply to us. And DESI, this has come out in two different sets of guidance. This slide, it references the July 24th guidance. These are the groups that you should consider prioritizing. And obviously, you know, it might be that there's a larger list than you can safely accommodate. So they've asked schools to focus on the first two groups. So students with disabilities and English language learners, as well as students who don't have reliable access or suitable learning spaces at home. And then on the next slide, it dives in a bit more to that first category regarding students with disabilities. This came out in the July 9th guidance. And this asked districts to prioritize in-person instruction for students with disabilities who have significant and complex needs. And they, and I won't read all the bullets to you here, but they've sort of outlined how you might identify those students. And so that is one of the things that we are going to be jumping into, you know, as an admin team, but working closely of course with Jeff Albert to come up with how we're identifying those students and how we're going to communicate with those parents, recognizing that some students are going to need that 100% in-person learning. Does that speak to what you were asking about, Ms. Gallagher?
Yes and no. I have some concerns about IEPs that, IEPs and 504s, that I know that suddenly can do what during the COVID period, but I'll use myself as an example. I have a child who's on an IEP and I have not been contacted by the district and I'm on a state put IEP for the last several years. So somebody like me, I'm looking at this and, and my, my child, I believe, has some complex needs. But I do believe he needs to be in school, but I am very concerned about his IEP being met. And how do we, how do we need to have meetings? I'm hearing that some families are actually going into the school right now and having meetings. And then other families are being scheduled months out. So I think for me, I think when Mr. Al comes in, a priority for me would be to make sure that we have all these IEPs and 504s in place before we can even address anything like this. I've had people reach out to me that said, they've told me that their child has autoimmune issues. They may have language-based learning disorders. I know you'll get a little bit more into that, but I think I would really prefer to see a lot more addressed in this for, for special needs. I know you can't get into that now, but even the specialized director prior to this should have been working on this. And that's just my two cents. But we'll see what Mr. Albert comes up with on Monday. And Justin, if possible, I would actually throw out there too, that I would probably at this point, since he is coming in on Monday and we do have some time is to maybe get some parents involved, whether it's special education pack or parents that may have reached out to be on the, the special education director interviews. I mean, we need to reach out to some parents and have them involved because, you know, from a district perspective, I mean, you guys are focused, but parents do have some major concerns. I can't even tell you how many emails I've received and I only sent part of them to Dr. Jackson and Chairman Muse today. So I think we need to get some parent engagement in here as well. Because I'm having parents even say with the social emotional issue, not just with special education, but for kids that are regular ed going back, that needs to somehow be addressed in this too. And I think our guidance staff, we really need to take a look at them and how tax they may be going forward with dealing with these, these situations as well. So. Yeah, that's kind of my two cents, but I'll let you continue.
So moving on to the, to the next piece here, before I turn it back to Dr. Jackson, one of the pieces that will be essential is getting our staff, the professional development and time that they need before students return. And so we are in the process of planning what those 10 additional days would look like. And our priorities during that time are to make sure everyone understands and can implement our health and safety procedures, to have clear guidance from the school on expectations for remote learning, which teachers did have input in helping us put those together, to provide some PD on tools of inclusive practices to support students during this time, knowledge and tools regarding social emotional learning and trauma-informed practices. And then this is more of a training piece, but getting everyone highly equipped to leverage Microsoft Teams and related Microsoft products so we can deliver students with a consistent and reliable system through which remote curriculum and instruction occurs. And then coupled with all of that is structured collaboration time for our.
Nancy, did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll let her finish her thought. I'm sorry, excuse me, Jessica. I just had a minor point. I'm reading all these professional development bullets. Who's training the teachers? We're in a new territory. Who's experienced enough to walk us through that or walk them through it?
Question. So we have a blend of folks within the building as well as where.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I missed what you said initially.
So some of it will be delivered by people within the building, but we're also in the process of finalizing contracts with some outside providers. So today, we've been working with two people who do work with schools around social emotional learning and trauma-informed practices to come in and work with our staff on that. So it'll be a blend of experts in the field and people with expertise in our building.
But they're still, they're still surfing new waters. I mean, that's my concern. It's like, so their experience is in specific areas as opposed to the big picture. Is that right?
I'm not quite sure I understand your question. Do you mind saying that again?
Well, what you, you have, you described specific areas of expertise. I'm just wondering, who's going to present a package to the teachers? You're saying they're going to be exposed to information from these professionals.
So the whole package will be what we as a district put together to deliver and structure over those 10 days. And part of that package will include expert, people with expertise in the building, helping staff as well as outside experts.
Okay, I guess I'm not comfortable with the level of expertise, but I guess we'd have to take what we thought. Thank you.
Jess, can I just interject here? We will, as a school committee, we will get exactly what the professional development programs are going to be.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Patty. Thank you, Chairman.
The last piece of that professional development focus is just significant time for our staff to work together in their departments and programs to develop and revise curriculum and other plans so that they can do their, their jobs, do what they do, but do it well remotely and, and supporting students in the building. But this hybrid model is new. We are sort of building parts of the shift in a way as we go. But I, I know that our staff are committed and going to take this time seriously to do what is best for our students. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you. So coming down the home stretch here, I do want to, to remind the committee and the community that this is still a work in progress. There has been an incredible amount of collaboration, both inside this building, locally with our sending district, partner districts, and statewide collaborations among educators have really made this and have been an essential ingredient to this work. Much, many of the plan that we're presenting is very similar to plans that have already been approved at Essex Tech and Essex Aggie, at Keefe Tech, at Minuteman. And we have, we have made a lot of inroads and connected with those folks to ensure there's some consistency and shared best practices. We all do know, but I think it's important to mention that the status of the virus drives all. And it is, I mean, I don't think anybody can predict what the numbers will be today when they're announced at the end of the day, let alone in mid-September. So all of these may, all of these plans may require change depending on the status of the virus. And this next bullet is the one that keeps, is keeping me up at night. This plan assumes adequate staffing levels. There are opportunities available to staff who have children who are in remote learning in their districts to take paid leave to care for their children during the time they are on remote learning. That is a federal law that passed in the initial portions of the, the, of the, of the virus and of the shutdown. We have not been able to reach out to staff to ascertain how many are in that situation because districts are just now finalizing their plans. So if you are a teacher, if you're an English teacher and you've got a third grader who goes to, or you know, who goes to an elementary school in Burlington, you don't know what the Burlington plan is yet. You don't know if you are going to need, if your child is going to need supervision during times when they're home. So we are, that is a, a, something that frankly, that to me is like the linchpin issue here about whether or not this can be executed. I think it's important to, to recognize that some components of this plan may impact mandatory subjects of bargaining and require bargaining with, with the teachers association. I've been in contact with the president of the STA and he has issued a demand to bargain over reopening and those, and now that this plan has been, once this plan is approved or once we have an approved, approved plan, those conversations will begin. And I want to be very transparent that there are still many issues that need to be resolved. Some of them are on our radar. Some of them will be identified from questions that we get today, from you, from staff members, parents, students, or members of our community. Everyone, this, this work is, is very iterative and will, and will require adjustments. Some of the work, some of the issues we're working on now is we do, we are required by the state and will provide a 100% remote model for parents who feel their child, who are uncomfortable with having their child participate in person. That does not require a medical note. That just requires a parent to say, I'm uncomfortable. I'm opting out of in-person. And we have to provide a 100% remote option for that student. We obviously have talked about the, the high need students. They also do, as you know, as, but I think it's worthy of mentioning, do have the option, opportunity to participate 100% in-person in our academic, in our academics. We do, we are in the process of assessing student technology needs to ensure that our students have adequate technology to participate remotely. And we do have to finalize the process of identifying students who we're going to prioritize for in-person learning. And then there is a lot of parent, student, parent, family training and support and communication that is ongoing. Jess and I are already talked this morning about hosting a number of virtual conferences with parents where they can ask questions, general questions, not specific to their student, and also some training sessions that we're going. Or general questions, not specific to their student, and also some training sessions that we're going to provide about things like how do parents manage Microsoft Teams if they want to be part of that? For example, how? Or, and also there'll be some, some training and outreach to students prior to the opening of school, for example, about some of our procedures that we're going to develop about entry to the building, traffic around the building in order to maintain some distance. We are in the process of preparing some of our spaces. We are required to create a secondary nurses area where we can temporarily place students or staff member who are COVID suspected showing signs and symptoms and where they can rest prior to being picked up by a parent or guardian. We are investigating the possibility of finding spaces, places where students can take mask breaks. There are very specific criteria as to what those spaces have to look like. Down to the, almost to the size of the paper, we need to provide students for them to place their mask on when they're taking a break. We have to identify issues, figure out how we're going to feed everybody. Again, a lot of this is dependent on the, on the hybrid model that, once we have a hybrid model, assuming it's identified and approved by the committee, we'll then know how we can best implement the process of feeding our students. We do, we have some, have had a lot of preliminary talks with, with the leader of that group. And we are identifying how many meals we can offer per day, et cetera. And we're also looking to identify opportunities for outdoor learning spaces. Particularly so we can take advantage of this fall weather, which I think it's, is intuitively obvious that outdoor spaces are, are preferable than indoor spaces. And we want to take advantage of the fall and provide as many as we can. We have to do some building modifications, signage. We are in the process of getting our HVAC system, which is in very good shape, but getting it documented as such for, so that we can provide that information to the association, to teachers individually and to parents. And will be, and are in the process. We have purchased and are in the process of any, of installing sanitizing stations. And then we have a lot of work to do around developing our operational protocols, not only around cleaning and disinfecting classes, but for shared tools and mobile devices. What are some of, again, one of our movement protocols? And we are going to, just as kind of a heads up to the committee, as I wrap this part up, as, this is a non-inclusive list of some of the work in progress. We are going to be updating our student disciplinary expectations related to COVID, COVID. So for example, you know, is it a punishable offense to refuse to wear a mask if you don't have a medical or approved excuse? What if you purposely cough on a student or staff member? What are the consequences of that? We want to, want to be more specific and update our student handbook. That may require an additional school committee meeting prior to the tentative start of school. So we can, for the school committee to approve an addendum to our student handbook for that. So that's just kind of a basic outline of where we are. So we are now, Ms. Muse entering the question portion of this. And I'll turn it back to you for questions for the commit, from the committee. While that's happening, if there are members of the Shawshank community who are watching this presentation live, you can mail me questions about the fall school reopening plan to bjackson@shawtech.org. And following the portion where committee members are, are asking questions, I will read questions that I receive from, from, through this mechanism and answer them live. But in the mean, but Madam Chair, I'll turn the meeting back to you for, for questions from the committee.
Okay, thank you. I will say, can I, I'm going to just say a little thing. I will say that the committee members, most of them have already asked the superintendent questions regarding this reopening plan. And he has responded and he's actually changed some of his slides to answer those questions. So if you don't think we're all very interested, we are. We've, we've done our homework. We have read the plan and we have asked our questions. I will open it up to anyone, anybody else in the committee.
I have a question regarding the work in progress slide. I know, Dr. Jackson, you said it's going to be, to be determined. It's open. I understand. Can you help me understand a little better opt in, opt out 100%? Student is slated for remote and wants to come in. How do we accommodate it? And on the other hand, is on, in and wants to go to remote? How fluid is that process? Are we not there yet?
Well, the, the process for selecting students, so first of all, students who are on, so for the, for the, for the remote learning portion of their day, of their week, as only high need students that are selected by the district and/or through a collaborative process with the fam, with the, the individual student's family will be eligible to participate 100% in person. So that is available for students with identified high need, who are identified as high needs, is only available to them.
Only, okay, that answers that question. I, I misunderstood. Okay.
Students can, all, all students can opt into 100% remote. Or their families. They don't have to have a doctor's note. They don't have to have a medical condition. They just have to say, I'm not comfortable. We want to be, we want remote. And the, and we have to, we have to and will accommodate that. We don't, though, how we will accommodate that is going to be a function of how many students choose that, choose that option. If they're, and some of the options to, to provide that on the academic side could be live streaming the classroom that's taking place. They're at home that, for the live portion that is for, for student, when their classmates are in person and they want to be at home. One option is to livestream the class. That would have to, that, that would undoubtedly require conversations with the Teachers Association. Other options on the academic side could, there are. The state has purchased a learning management system that has nine to 12, all the curriculum content that students could access asynchronously, which means at their pace for content that would be supervised by one of our teachers. Perhaps one of our teachers who is also maybe medically compromised and have to work remotely from home as well. That's an option. And from, however, I want to be clear on the 100% remote option. Duplicating the shop environment is essentially impossible. There is no way for an electrical student to unsupervised rewire their uncle's house in a, without proper supervision. And that supervision cannot be provided remotely. So, because it is simply unsafe. So there are portions of our, our shop environment that we will not be able to duplicate as well as an in-person environment can be. I think that that, and I, I think that's, while I, I think it's important to be transparent about that. Did that answer your question, Nancy?
Pretty much. And I'm sure, again, as you said, it's a work in progress, so there will be adjustments, but that's, that's good for now. Thank you.
I have two questions. Go ahead, Lisa.
All right. I'm, I'm sorry. I, because I was only supposed to be on here about a half an hour, but I just want to just kind of bang these out. Thanks, Taryn. When you said that you reached out to the towns, who specifically in the towns did you reach out to kind of work on this?
The superintendents.
The superintendents of each town. Okay. The other thing too is if somebody does not have, if, if they're not comfortable sending their child in school and they have to do the remote learning and they do not have a computer and they do not have wifi, what do they do at that point?
At this point in time, we are, we, we will put, we will equip the student with the technology needed to, to, for students to access remote learning. Though if they don't have wifi and they qualify from a, from a.
Like say free and reduced lunch or something like that?
Then Comcast offers wifi at a highly reduced rate. I think it's like $6 a month for families who are low income.
Okay. And how, how would, would the school help with that or would?
We will help. The parents ultimately have to make the connection with Comcast, but I know that I've done it in the past, in my previous district, and I'm, I'm sure we've done it here. We can help facilitate that connection. I think it's an important, it's an important aspect.
All right. As far as parents and teachers, I know you're still working with the STA on this, but like, at what point do we find out from parents? Do we need to survey parents and find out who's comfortable with this plan and who's not? And we also need to, you know, with that being so, we need to find out from teachers, like how they feel too. So at what point, within the next couple of weeks, are we going to kind of solidify like what teachers feel comfortable coming back and what students, I mean, what parents are sending the students back? I mean, because I, I think we need to try to kind of firm some of this up because you're not, you're not going to know whether or not you're going to have enough teachers with enough students who do show up to school or shop. So at what point do we?
I agree. That data is essential. And I've already drafted, not wanting to presuppose any vote by this committee, but I've already drafted an email to send to both parents and to staff member announcing what plan the school committee has approved. And asking, and Ms. Cook has already drafted surveys both for parents and for staff members about what their preliminary plans would be based on the information that we're providing at this time. So that we can have kind of a, an order of magnitude idea as to how big this is. And that information, depending on how late this meeting goes today, that, that our goal is to send that email out to parents and to staff today.
All right. For those, for those students who are seniors and that, you know, need to get those shop hours in, if they choose to participate remotely, like, you know, I have a daughter who's in carpentry or, you know, if somebody's in electrical, how are they going to get their hours in? And has the Department of Education come back to us, the vocational technical schools, and said they're going to honor online learning or they need to have those in-person hours? How's that going to work?
I don't, I don't have an answer to that. Ms. Cook, do you have anything or is that something that we'd have to ask Dave and we could provide?
I, I can provide some initial detail. So the biggest challenge for hours is going to be for students who are in programs with licensed trades where they need to track and apply those hours. I know that work is being done amongst vocational organizations like MAVA and the various licensing boards, because those are state boards, to address any concerns about that. I don't have the information at this moment to talk about exactly how that would play out with students who are 100% remote on the vocational side. But I know that work is being done there. And when we get any official word on anything, we will share it.
Okay. Do you think that's going to be shared in the next couple of weeks? Because I mean, parents are probably going to make some, you know, decisions based off of that.
I don't know at this moment, no.
Okay. And shops like carpentry, hairdressing, culinary? I mean, as far as mask wearing and, and like ventilation in those areas and some of the other places that you've outlined in the, in presentation. First off, who's providing the masks? Are they medical masks? Are students providing their own? Because if the students are providing their own, we don't want somebody coming in with like, you know, derogatory stuff on it. Are we going to have to provide a policy around that? Are we going to be providing masks for our staff, our students? Are they going to have cutouts in these masks? I know I talked to Melanie Hagen a few months back and when all this stuff started to kind of, you know, bubble up, she actually had put in an order for masks with like, kind of cutouts in them so students could see what teachers were saying. And so I, so I'm just trying to find out, like, and with all this being said, have we done like a cost analysis on cleaning supplies, PPE, everything? I mean, how much more is this going to cost us to open up with a hybrid model? So has anybody looked into that as well?
So let me try to, masks, cost, all right. So Desi's guidance is that students must wear a face covering, it must cover their face, their nose and mouth. And so there are no, there are no requirements, you know, the, the standard CVS issue paper mask meets that requirement. Any, any, and students are expected, students and families are expected to provide their own masks. And students will not be allowed in the building unless they have a pre-approved exemption without one. They actually will not be allowed on the bus without one as well. The staff members are going to be asked to provide their own masks as well. We will have backup masks here at the school for, if a student's mask breaks during the day or if, you know, an emergency such as that arises. In terms of cost, that's a great question. And I, I'm not sure if I answered the questions in between.
That's fine.
But in terms of cost, Shawshank has been allocated, has received two federal government kind of state pass-through entitlement grants to help us pay for COVID-19 related expenses. One in the amount of about $85,000 and the other in the amount of about $220,000 to $240,000. Our plan at this point in time is to utilize the $85,000 grant to, for technology and to allocate the, the other grant towards PPE and some of these other expenses that are related to reopening. I think regardless of, what, if we go back, if we go 100% remote now, I think, you know, districts are still entitled to reimbursement through this grant process for any costs that they have incurred, to use that money for costs that they have incurred to prepare for in-person, for in-person learning. Any costs that would go above that, we'd need to, we'd need to work with the budget subcommittee and, and the, the school committee to address from a budgetary perspective.
Okay. So what about those families who, say in carpentry, they can't afford a toolkit? So the school, you know, donates one to the family. I mean, you're going to have families that, like, you know, I'm a taxpayant at Trixbury. I got two kids going there. I'm a single mom with four children. I'm paying for school supplies. I'm paying for tools. I'm paying for. I'm paying for school supplies. I'm paying for tools. I'm paying for, um, you know, culinary uniforms. I mean, I can tell you right now, my son, knowing him like I do, he's going to be tearing off masks left and right in culinary. And, um, you know, I, I just, I just feel that that's something we should be providing the students, especially in medical grade masks. I work in, um, an assisted learning community and they will not even let us, you know, they won't allow us to wear, um, you know, purchase masks. We have to wear medical grade masks. So, um, you know, I just think as a parent, um, I, I would like to see the school provide them, um, especially with those grants that you just listed off. Um, and I wouldn't expect the teachers to be purchasing their own PPE. I think we should be providing it for, for them. Um, that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Taryn.
Yes, thank you. So Lisa asked one of my questions about surveying, so I don't have to ask that, yeah, that one, but this one sort of has two parts. So the hundred percent remote, obviously there's some kids that are going to do it all year or, you know, indefinitely because they need to. But is it something that has some fluidity to it? Uh, the, what I'm thinking of is my daughter has a cold and she doesn't have COVID, she has a cold. But you're not going to want her in the building coughing and sneezing and everything, because even though we all know it's just a cold, it's still going to worry people. But she's not sick enough that she can't learn. So in a case like that, you know, can someone switch to a hundred percent remote for a week?
That's a great question that I had not even thought. That's a scenario that never occurred to me.
Brad, could I interrupt you? Can you stop screen sharing so we can see everybody? Please?
I can't. Would you, would you prefer that?
Personally, but if I'm out, if, if we need to people feel C G address, that's fine. Well, you should be able to see everybody. There it goes.
How's that?
For some reason on my iPad, I either see the, the display or I see everybody. If you're screen sharing, I can't see everybody. I don't know why. Thank you.
So, um, the, uh, now I've, no, I've forgotten your question, Taryn. I, I've.
Can you go a hundred percent remote? On a short term and I'm thinking specifically kids who are homesick with a cold.
There's no, um, there's no specific guidance from Desi that says, once you're out, you're out and when you're in, you're in. So, um, we anticipate that there may be some, our families that, that prefer a little bit more fluid of a, um, of movement. But, um, it, um, it will, um, it will depend on whether, you know, the situation that you described would depend on whether we are already set up in that particular academic classroom to provide simultaneous in-home and in-school instruction. So, because we can't just turn that on classroom by classroom on a dime. So, um, if there's already somebody participating in, uh, in, um, remotely in a particular class that's being run live, then it would probably be a little easier to move somebody in on a temporary basis such as you described. But, um, if not, to set it up would probably take longer than the cold would last.
Makes sense.
That's kind of my initial thought. Ms. Cook, do you have any, did I, any dissimilar thoughts?
Uh, I'm, I'm pretty much in line with your thinking. I also think that when we have a bigger picture of, you know, maybe working remote, how many students will be permanently remote? There may be a function in which, you know, that provides another outlet, but I think we need a bit more data before we can finalize that.
I would just add that I think we do want to consider, I don't know if it's something would go handbook, but some sort of policy for families so that when their child does get a cold, um, what's the guidelines? Because some of the symptoms overlap. So how do I know that Susannah's got a cold or Susannah has COVID? When I have no knowledge of her having been exposed to it, but it still could have happened, that I as a parent can determine, Susannah, you need to stay home even though you don't have a fever. Like obviously, if you have a fever, you stay home. That's a given. That's always been the policy. But what about the child who is showing symptoms of a cold and does not have a fever? Like some guidelines for the parents so that they know, because I mean, a lot of times it's, it's shop week. I want to see my shop. I need to, to practice my cutting of pipes. I don't care if I have a cold. I'm going to school. And, and you want to encourage your child because they want to be there, but so to have guidelines so that people can say, the rules are, I know you want to be there, but the rules are blah, blah, blah. Not that you have the rules now, but that we developed the rules.
I think what you're saying too, Taryn, you know, I, I actually a spin-off question of that too. So say your child does come in, right? And, um, there's somebody else in the class that maybe, um, is asymptomatic and tests positive. Like what happens with the entire class at that point? Does everyone get, how do you get notified? Um, does a teacher go into quarantine? Do all the kids in that class go into quarantine? Um, there's just kind of so many what ifs, you know? So, but you know, you, you have kids that have asthma and to have them wear a mask or, you know, like you said, if they cough, I, I hope that, you know, if my, my kid was one of those that came in and, you know, was just having a, a really crappy day with a cold or something like, she's not going to get, you know, written up for coughing, maybe the wrong way, you know? So I, I, I just, you know, I, I hear what you're saying.
I was talking about coughing as a, as a.
Oh, yeah, I, I know. But like, you know, I, you know, what one person takes. Yeah.
You say, uh, let's not get hung up on this. I agree with you thinking. Parents have a million different things. I know, I know. This is gray area. Uh, Brad, I think this is the only way to go. I'm willing to try this. So many questions.
So you're putting, you're putting forward a vote, like you.
Uh, yeah, no, I'm going to discuss. I want to discuss. I want to discuss. Hybrid is the only way to go for vocational school. Yes, I'm willing to try it. Uh, there is so many gray areas. I know that, it's scary. It's scary. And, uh, I think we're going to try. We may be, we may be shutting down in within a month. We don't know yet.
Yeah, I know. I know. But like, you know, the public school versus a vocational school. I mean, I, I just think, you know, between, again, there, there's a lot of what ifs. I mean, there's, you know, and, and, um, I, I don't know. I, I, I don't know.
No, I know. I know. I know. No, that's fine. No, listen, I understand as a, as a parent. I know. I'm with you a hundred percent.
I think Brad's made it clear that this is a work in pro- process.
If, if I can just add in that, uh, there are, uh, DESI protocols on, uh, all of those issues in terms of what happens when there's a positive test and all of those things there's, it's on the DESI desktop. Uh, it's, uh, it's a lot of pages, a lot of information, but the protocols are established, uh, and they are on the DESI, uh, website.
Yeah. And see, and see, this is the stuff too, Howard, like if I had this information prior to kind of read through it, and I know the summer is just kind of like the worst time to be doing this because everyone's on vacation or they just, you know, can't make a meeting. I'm, I'm at work right now. All right.
Yeah, it's a huge amount of work.
It is. And, and, and I appreciate like all the time that the administration, the teachers, everyone's put into this. But, you know, as a school committee member, you know, I have a commitment to, you know, my district and kids there and my kids. And, and if I read the DESI protocols, um, I don't want to be seeing them online from other parents. I want to be provided those, that, that information from the school when I'm looking at a plan like this, you know, to, to approve, because I'll be honest with you, I'm not comfortable with this plan. There is a lot of what ifs. And, um, I'm thinking about the teachers, the students, temperature taking, if somebody does have a cough, providing masks, things like that. There's a lot of what ifs. I think, and, and we'll, we'll have this discussion after, but I, I almost think we should just, uh, do remote learning for now and then whatever. But we'll discuss it.
The, the other thing from what I've read, uh, the, the cardinal number one rule is that if your child doesn't feel well, whether it's a cold, a cough or anything, the, uh, public health departments are urging everybody, if your child does not feel well, if it's anything, to stay home that day.
That's true.
Okay. And can I just ask one more question for our teachers? Can I ask one more question for our teachers? Are we opening up the, um, the childcare?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, excuse me, can I just ask, what is a vote going to do? Obviously there's a lot of details, a lot of questions, but I have a feeling that we're going to be meeting again to address those things.
Yeah, Nancy, I think we.
What is today's vote going to?
The vote is, is so we can send Desi what we're going to do, what type of opening we plan on having. That's it.
Yes.
I think you have to remember too, like if you look at Burlington, I mean, they've had like, many of these schools have had like many months to prepare. Like this is, you got to remember that's not the case with this, with Shawshing. So like, if you look at Burlington, Woburn, other school systems have had like stuff going back to like June. So, I mean, you, I, I got to agree with Brad. Like you got, you got.
You know, Brad jumped in late.
There isn't much, he kind of started July 1st. I mean, he doesn't, hasn't had much time. It's going to be a work.
But you had other administrators that have.
Yeah, yeah.
Looking forward, how many intermediary meetings will we have to answer the questions that we all have?
Probably a lot.
I think like other, other, other schools have done like weekly stuff. I think that's something. I, I talked to Brad yesterday and I said like, that's something they're going to have to talk about is doing like info sessions. And I know Brad's going to do that. He's going to share information about like, you know, doing Zoom sessions for parents to ask, you know, questions. There's going to be meetings around like trainings, like stuff like that, the stuff that they'll share. But I mean, it's, it's, it's ever evolving. It's not going to change.
We need it as well as the parents.
Yes, I agree.
Uh, we need to have intermediary steps and I have no problem with Zooming with an hour a week. I mean, I think it's really hard to ask, uh, our, the group to give us specifics. I have a ton of them. And I just don't know how to verbalize them because there's so many questions, like you said.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, we need to find out from our, our staff and our parents first. I mean, who, I mean, we could be voting on a hybrid model and everybody wants a remote.
No, I think we need to move forward with the plan, uh, and just start from there. Uh, there's going to be lots of changes, uh, moving parts. We have to start someplace, Lisa.
No, I, I agree.
That's true. That's true.
That whatever we pick, if we picked full in-person, if we picked full remote or we picked a hybrid, there's no way you're going to make everybody happy.
And not, not only that, but things are going to change. I mean, we might wake up and the state might say we're going to go a hundred percent remote. And we're going to have to make that leap. So, I mean, we have to be available for changes.
Nancy, they left it up to us.
Well, I think that's what they're going to do. Most other committees are going to have weekly communication and you're going to have to like go and have a meeting in, in a week that, you know, COVID doubles, you're going to have to have another meeting to basically approve a change to that model. And I'm sure Brad and Jess Cook and Melanie will all advise that, but I agree with Paul. You're going to have to start somewhere. I mean, you know, it's, it's not perfect, but I mean, you're going to have to like, you know, not all questions are going to be answered, but at least have something. I mean, I have kids in school system too. I mean, you know, my daughter went through a summer camp and they, every day is like a never anything. I mean, I've had to leave work to go pick her up and, you know, other, they shut down a camp because one of the camps she was at had COVID. Somebody tested positive. They shut it down for the last two days. You know, so it's, it's not going to be perfect. I mean, we have to like do something to move forward here. I mean, that's, I think the purpose of this meeting.
Well, Brad, Brad and Jess, I, I, the only thing in the back of my mind is, um, I hope we have enough staff. I'm, I'm, this is all, I'm thinking about this, my question. You know, Brad, I know Brad, you were worried about this already. Uh, we don't know how many staff are going to opt out for their, for the leave act. Uh, we don't know how many people. So, um, yeah, I want to move forward, but I hope we have enough staffing could be a major issue.
I think we need regular meetings. I really feel we need to hear all these simple changes, maybe simple, but they build. It's a domino effect and we, I, I for one, am struggling.
Yeah. I, I apologize. I, I really have, I'm an hour over what I should have and I'm wondering if, um, we can just move the vote on this.
Oh, Patty, I'll make a motion to accept the hybrid plan.
I would second that.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Yes.
I, yes, yes.
Aye. Don't you have to do roll call? Yeah. I will do a roll call, but.
Ms. Muse, I just want to, um, inform you that Mr. Peterson has joined us by phone. That's the phone number you may.
Okay.
So when you're doing roll call, um, you, uh, might want to include him.
Prior to our vote, could I request that we have weekly or bi-weekly or semi-weekly, whatever it is, reviews to know where our staff is because they're going to be struggling and they can't remember to tell us everything. I, I, I feel like I want to know.
All right, uh, Brad, is that possible? Just, yeah, just a weekly update?
Oh, I, I certainly am going to keep the committee involved in the, in the process, uh, that we're going to do, that we're going to be following to, um, to update the community and to provide the community with our communities with different, with the new information. And I'll provide you access to the, um, um, to the, we're going to be doing these type of Zoom sessions with parents, uh, information sessions and provide you with that info, those access information so that you can participate on those. I don't want to duplicate efforts. Um, I think it's important, uh, and I think you might actually see some value in participating in the parent, um, meetings because that way you can be hearing from them as well as understanding what their questions are to better, uh, to better, um, help me prioritize. So.
I think, Brad, I think a parent forum would be great.
Yeah, that's.
Baric is doing it.
Yep. That's, um, I, I chose, um, Ed, you know, and it was my decision, uh, if it, if people find fault with it, that's fine. It's, it was my decision. Um, I felt it was disrespectful to the committee to bring a forum out prior to, um, this process because I, um, I thought that if, I didn't want to appear like I was pushing a, um, a solution to parents and going around the school committee to build, to build, um, uh, you know, support for, um, my plan. So I chose to do it afterwards, um, but, um, and that was my call.
Brad.
Patty, can you?
I know we wanted to do a vote for, for Lisa, but we never asked for any community questions. Brad, did you get any emails? I, I hate to delay because I know Lisa needs to leave, but.
Yeah.
Uh, we never, if Brad got any emails, we never heard about them.
If I may, if, if we can, uh, maybe take the questions after the vote, that way we still get the information in there and Lisa can leave.
I appreciate that.
Patty, can I make a comment?
Yeah.
If you can hear me. I've been listening for two hours, an hour and a half. And what I've concluded is that we really don't have any answers and we're flying in the dock. And we're relying on Brad's, um, recommendation and the work that he and Jessica have done. And I thank Jessica, Brad, Melanie and David for their hard work. And if, uh, Ron hasn't already made the motion, I would make a motion that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for the hybrid plan.
I, I made, I made the motion, Ron. Thank you.
Motion in a second, Ron. So I will ask you, okay. And what is your response? Are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Nancy?
Yes.
Lisa?
No.
Ron?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Taryn? Yes. Paul?
Yes.
Myself am a yes. So that is how many we have here.
But I really want to emphasize, I don't want just reports. I want these discussions. I really feel there's going to be a lot. No, no disrespect to the people who've worked on it.
Seven to one.
Okay. So that's six out of seven. So the motion.
Peterson was here as well. So seven in favor, one opposed.
Yeah. I apologize. I do have to leave, but, um, I know I did, I know that I did actually, um, send in some questions, um, to, because I had some people reach out to me, so I hope those do get addressed, but I apologize for, uh, kind of cutting you guys off. I just am like an hour over doing a meeting. So thank you very much and I look forward to getting that information. Thank you.
Bye, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. Bye, Lisa.
All right, Brad, I would ask you to, uh, do you have any questions that list that we have not addressed?
Yes. Could, um, could everybody who's not speaking, please mute themselves there. Um, I, I got an email from a couple of people saying they were having a hard time hearing, uh, because there was some superfluous noise out there. So, um, the committee is going to have to make some decisions about how long this process is going to be. I have a, uh, Ms. Gallagher forward me, forwarded me comments from six anonymous, uh, parents that she wanted me to read and comment on and answer. And I have about a dozen, um, specific questions from, uh, either staff members or, um, apparently parents.
I think some of those that Lisa had sent. All right. Cause I think some of those that Lisa had sent you, we already answered.
Yes. So, um, the first question, I'm gonna go through hers first because I, I'm gonna go through them in the order in which I received them. And then, um, when, um, when you folks have, uh, you know, have, uh, think it's time for, uh, for this process to end, just let me know and then we can move on to the calendar.
Go no longer than fifteen minutes.
All right. So I'll let you be the timekeeper then. Um, so the first question I received was about, um, uh, lunch and, um, uh, the, the, the concern around it, um, the need for students to remove their masks. Um, the, uh, the Desi, Desi has issued very specific guidance about lunch, which requires students to be at a minimum six feet apart before they can remove their mask to eat. Um, we are, um, and, um, that is, um, um, as that is what promulgated the, uh, change to the, uh, capacity of our cafeteria. So, um, that is, um, that, that, uh, we will be following Desi, um, guidelines in our, in lunch, in serving lunch. Um, the second concern, um, is actually a process concern um, about the lack of transparency and community involvement in planning for the upcoming school year. Um, this, um, anonymous, uh, parent, it says, um, is completely dumbfounded by that lack of transparency and community involvement. Um, and, um, um, I, I hope I addressed some of those concerns, uh, during my presentation. Uh, the next question was, um, how can a freshman go back before the two weeks that the union negotiated for teachers to prepare? This is a question about, um, uh, freshman orientation, which, um, I, I want, uh, we, I was planning on answering as part of the, um, school schedule question, but right now we are examining two possible models for freshman orientation. One is to bring freshmen in, um, um, in smaller cohorts, um, during the latter part of the ten days to have, uh, at least a technology and a, uh, orientation and an orientation to the building. Um, um, that would be conducted not by teachers because they would be in professional development, but by other staff members. Um, the other alternative is because our freshmen will be here on an academic day, their first day on what I am hoping the committee will vote will be Monday, um, September fourteenth. We could make that an orientation day because we'll have all our freshmen in house. We're still working on freshman orientation. Um, the fourth concern was about, um, um, the practice, um, uh, request that the committee alter its practice and make documents associated with the committee, um, agenda posted with the agenda. That's a policy decision that I'll defer to the committee for a future discussion.
We'll discuss that at a future meeting.
Um, the, um, the fifth concern stresses this parent's complete frustration with the superintendent and the principal in not having parent involvement sooner. Um, and also suggesting that this person was, um, offended by some of the questions that were asked on the survey regarding food and transportation. Um, I, uh, apologize to that parent for offending them, but I do think it's important that we understand what our students' needs are for food insecurity, if there are any, um, social emotional issues going on in the household. And I hope I made it clear in the survey that that information didn't have to be filled out in the survey. It could be provided directly to Guidance Council. The sixth question that, um, Ms. Gallagher forwarded to us, um, is about masks. Um, I think I've answered that and who is providing them. I've answered that. Um, um, let's see, what else is here? Um, about how are they entering the building? Um, we're still working on that. Will daily temperature checks be required? No. Um, that is part of Desi's, or, um, uh, guidance that daily temperature checks are not required or exiting temperature checks. Um, will students be required to get physicals this year if they can't go to their doctor's office? Um, I don't know the answer to that. Um, what's gonna happen with all contact sports, um, all sports are, um, have been delayed at least for the start of practice right now through Monday, uh, September fourteenth. Um, that decision, um, is, um, probably going to be revisited soon. I've been, uh, the commissioner told superintendents yesterday that this decision was actually being transitioned to Desi. Um, and we should expect some further guidance from Desi regarding fall sports in the next two weeks. Um, uh, parking permits, are they going to be waived? Uh, we haven't had that conversation. Um, I don't anticipate that at this time. Um, will parents get any type of reimbursement for their student not taking the bus? Um, no, uh, because I don't think they're paying a fee for their student to take the bus. Um, so, um, um, are lockers being used this year? No. We are not going to allow access, students access to their, um, hallway lockers. Um, uh, there was a question on sanitation. We are, uh, as I said, that's a work in progress. Um, can a parent choose to keep their child home? Yes. Will a computer and additional Wi-Fi access be provided by the school? The computer will, will help parents of, of low income, uh, if they have, um, um, internet access problems. Um, and there was some questions about bathroom cleaning, which again, uh, we are working on. How will we handle visitors to the school? We are going to be significantly limiting visitors to the school. Um, and, um, any, uh, um, visitors that, uh, we do allow will require screening prior to entry. Um, let's see, now I have to turn to my computers. This is gonna take a little longer. Cause I wanted, again, do this, this is kind of in the reverse order. Um, how quickly could a pivot to remote, uh, full remote occur? Will there be a delay or will it occur immediately? Um, that, um, that's a great question. Um, you may notice in the, um, schedule that we've brought in front of you um, that we have, still have an extra, we actually have a hundred and seventy first school, uh, teacher, student day in there. Um, that we would, we've kind of ear, we're, we're kind of earmarking that in our, um, in our heads. Should we require a pivot to full remote that we would, um, use, we would, um, use, uh, a professional day, one professional day to pivot to remote. Um, and then, uh, there was, uh, the question is about, um, um, full remote, either with their district's teacher or with an online school that they have contracted with. I talked a little about that, that that's gonna depend on the level of, the number of teachers, uh, and, uh, students who are requesting full remote. Uh, and that issue hasn't been, um, you know, is going to be dependent on the numbers. Uh, let's see. Can students come in before school opens if needed to make them feel better about changes? Um, haven't thought about that. Um, that's a great question. We'll have to, Jess will have to mark that as something we'll, um, have to think about. Um, um, and the question about, uh, masks for clear, with clear openings so staff can see, um, so students can see, see staff speaking, um, where those are required, um, for students who, um, are deaf or, um, have hearing impairments. Um, those will be, um, provided for all teachers, um, so that students, um, and, um, students, uh, teachers optionally can, um, can provide their own. We, uh, as, um, Ms. Gallagher, um, uh, told you, um, I'm not sure how she knows this, but, um, Ms., um, um, Hagman, uh, purchased, um, a hundred, um, masks with clear, um, um, uh, clear, a clear window in them for, uh, use should they be required. Uh, the next question is mobile devices within the school. Oh, who's responsible for cleaning the devices between classes? Um, the technology, um, all of our, um, shared devices will need to be cleaned between use. Um, and, um, if, um, um, and that time for that, for if there are mobile carts, I'm not, frankly, I'm not, I'm so new, I don't even know if we have mobile, um, technology carts here. Um, if we do, we will have to make time to have them cleaned prior to, um, entry into the classroom. Um, and that will, um, likely at this point in time be the responsibility according to Desi of either the student or the custodian. Um, the supplies, however, will be, uh, the wipes will be provided by the school. Um, what are the expect, ex, uh, access, technology expectations for at-home use? We expect a student during the school day to have exclusive use of a internet-connected device. Um, for, um, the, uh, from the start of school to the end of school on days that we are fully remote. We are running a full schedule, um, from the start of school to the end of school and students, whether they are, um, in uh, the remote portion of our hybrid program, or we eventually move to a hundred percent remote. Um, they will need exclusive use of an internet-connected device. Uh, next question is about co-op. Is there any potential for getting juniors out maybe a bit earlier than the typical third or fourth terms? Um, that's an issue that we haven't addressed yet. We'll, uh, we'll put that in the parking lot, Jess, and, um, um, and, um, and consider that. I have to tell you though, that our priority is going to be co-op for our seniors. Um, and, um, that, um, and we would only move to juniors if and when, um, it's A, appropriate for the shop and B, there's availability of, uh, of co-op, um, assignments. Uh, but we are, um, that will only be if and when, um, all of our seniors in a particular shop are satisfied. Just, I.
And if I may, um, the guidance that, uh, they released on the twenty ninth says that for the start of the school year, we can only allow seniors on co-op. So, so at this moment, they're not allowing us yet to open it up to juniors.
Uh, there's a, the next question, thank you. The next question is about the role of guidance in the hybrid model. Will students report to the guidance office for sessions when they're in school? Or, um, conduct, um, them remotely or via Teams? Um, I don't have an answer to that yet. That's the issue we'll have to address, um, collaboratively with the head of guidance and his, um, uh, and the guidance counselors themselves. Um, and, um, are you working on a plan to ensure that freshmen are able to explore their first few choices? In exploratory, Ms. Cook addressed that issue. The answer is yes. I'm gonna try to put those up front. Um, um, so the next question around, um, my list of work in progress slash TBD, um, claiming that they've already been worked through and included in a reopening plan by other local school, uh, communities. Why hasn't this been determined for Shawshank? I think I've explained why we're a little bit behind. Um, first of all, I don't think they've all been, um, I think it's inaccurate to say they've been thought through, uh, completely. They, um, um, but there are some plans that are, um, that are more farther along than ours. That is true. And I think I've explained why. Um, how much distance will there be between desks and the academic and shop settings? That the, uh, Desi standards are, um, six feet is preferable, a minimum of three feet is required. Um, and that is the standard to which we have been planning. Um, what is the maximum number of students permitted in an academic class or shop that is completely the, um, room dependent? All our rooms are, um, different sizes and shapes, um, and different uses. Um, so, um, there is no standard capacity, um, for rooms. Um, and, uh, when, how can parents see the draft plan submitted to Desi last week? I have no clue. I actually have not. I, I submitted it online and I don't have a hard copy of it myself. So, um, uh, although I am slated to, uh, meet with, um, Desi today, um, to see if they have any feedback. Um, when will, when will the full plan due August tenth be available? Uh, the full plan is now not due until August fourteenth, um, Friday, August fourteenth, and it will be available, um, on August fourteenth to staff, um, obviously the school committee and, uh, and, um, um, and, uh, the community. Uh, how is this?
Can I interrupt?
Yep.
Okay, fifteen minutes is up. Do you have any, how many more questions you have?
Um, a couple. So, um, I, um, how is a school identifying high-need students? That question I think has been answered and is also available in the slides that'll be made available. Um, that's an internal question, um, that I will answer. Um, from a staff member, I don't mind answering staff member questions, but I'm trying to, um, and this says, this is a question that doesn't necessarily need to be answered in the meeting, just one that they'd like me to follow up on. The last question comes from our, um, reporter, um, from, uh, Bill Rekka, uh, will there be public safety officers hired to take temperatures? Yes, that is so. We are not doing temperature checks upon arrival. Those are the questions that I have, uh, from the public. If you'd like, I can, um, share my screen again and we can, uh, transition to the updated calendar vote.
Brad, just a quick question, uh.
Preparation for adjournment.
Brad. Question. Are the lunches, are we going in the caf for that?
Yeah.
Um, we're gonna be using the caf.
Okay.
As minimum, and we may be utilizing other spaces, um, depending on our capacity.
And then, uh.
Quick, I'm sorry.
No, I was just to say that the spaces in the classroom are gonna limit how many students are in there, but we don't know yet. I'll do it, I mean.
Oh, I know. I.
I mean.
Each class.
We know how many kids we can put in the classes, which is gonna limit the amount of kids in front of teachers. Is that gonna be, so I mean, class schedules will be changed, do you think? I'm just wondering.
Those, those capacities have been, um, input into Aspen and it's been viewed to drive the, the scheduling process.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll take all these questions, Brad. Thank you.
Question, um, you, in your discussion of, uh, whether we, teachers move or students move from classroom earlier on, uh, Jessica, I guess that might be your question. What is the reason that we're having the students move as opposed to the teacher? Seems to me a teacher moving is safer, but I don't know.
It's not gonna work.
So, based, based on the number of levels and course offerings that we have, um, it's very difficult for us to completely cohort and keep students, um, in the courses that they signed up for. Um, so as Dr. Jackson said earlier, we'll take a look, um, of whether it's possible to cohort, but we would have to probably significantly change the course leveling and assignments of most of our students.
So, Nancy?
Yes.
Just for, just for example, my daughter is a rising senior. Last year, she spent the whole day with two other kids. But every other class had other kids coming in and out because she's at one level for math and a different level for English and then a different shop. So it wasn't that there was this group of ten or fifteen or even five of them that stuck together all day. It was literally like two or three of them.
So it's not a mass of bodies moving? Okay.
No, right, right.
That's not how, that's not how high school schedules work, unfortunately.
Well, I'm old. I have to.
No, 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 Nancy, never say that, never say that.
Too bad you have to.
I have a different example.
It's okay. It's all good.
Okay, let's go to the school calendar.
Let's get Brad, let's get this, uh, let's move this on, please.
Hey, Brad, is it okay if I ask a couple of questions?
That's up to the chair.
Chair, is it all right if I ask a couple of questions? All right, just a couple of quick ones. Has there. Has your plan, is your plan being shared with the boards of health? Because I know, like, I know vocational is slightly different because it's shared with like different towns. But I know like some of the other districts, I mean, it's slightly different, but they share their, you know, some of the funding does come from Burlington. Do you share your plan with the boards of health for the three towns?
I, I, my primary contact will be the board of health in Bill Recker because that's the, that is the jurisdiction in which this, this school is located.
Okay. And then I know, I know others that did like a, like that outside independent firm come in and do like an assessment of their HVAC system. Is that something you guys that are doing?
We are, there, we have not determined that yet. We do, since we do have, we do offer that program in our school. We may have some experts in-house as well. But we will, we, we are, I think it's likely we'll have to do some sort of independent assessment of our HVAC system as well as, as well as to address concern from the association.
Okay, no, I was just curious.
Everyone needs to mute. I don't know if it's on.
Yeah, I was just curious because other school systems, that's something that I know some of them are doing. So I was just curious, like, and when you do send out your notice about, can you mention about like, you know, that there is going to be like, because I know like something, like one person reached out to me and Paul about like, you know, being transparent. So like where you're going to have like, you know, session, even though there was a vote, but you know, like, that there will be future like open houses and trainings and all that type of stuff for parents. Just so that you're aware of some of, that's all I had. Sorry. Sorry to hold the vote.
All right, I'm going to share my screen again. And just to introduce the last topic, which is, let's see if I can do this here. So can you see that? Can everybody see that? Okay.
Yes.
So July 27th, DESI announced that they had reached a statewide agreement with the Massachusetts Teachers Association, the Massachusetts Federation of Teachers and the Boston Teachers Union to modify the student learning requirements from 180 days to 170 days to provide districts with 10 additional days at the start of the 2021 school year for professional development and preparation. We shared with you our professional development, some of the ideas and some of the areas where we're going to be conducting professional development earlier. And I have since learned, since this slide was created, I've since learned that this, these 10 days are required. They are not optional. So I want to, I, I don't make a living as a superintendent by asking school committees to make rubber stamp votes. But that's, the state has taken that out of my hands. This, at this point in time, is a requirement. So it does require us to modify our school calendar. So the school calendar in your packet has been modified to, to designate nine days, 10 days, I'm sorry, the following 10 days as professional development days. August 26th, 27th, and 31st, September 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th, which would establish the first day of school for all our students, whether they be in-person or remote, as Monday, September 14th, 2020. And that would be my request of the committee to so vote.
I make a motion to vote, as Brad said, to adopt. Sorry, Dave.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I just say one thing, Brad? If people missed the opportunity to have their question answered because they got to you too late, is it okay to still email you and you'll get back to them next week?
Absolutely, I am always available via email. My wife would argue too available. But my email address is bjackson@shottech.org. People can email me questions as, as they occur today.
Very good.
Thank you.
Hey, Brad, can I just say one more thing?
Hold on, Ron, mute yourself.
Don't yell at me.
It is so noisy at your house, honey.
Hey, can I just say one more thing?
Sorry.
No worries. Go ahead, Pat.
I just want to say, I just want to say, and then I'll shut up. I just want to say thanks to Brad and Jess Cook and all the other people for putting this together. I know it's a hard time to do it. So at least my perspective, I don't envy your guys' situation and you're always transparent and get back to us. And I think you guys are doing a really good job and I appreciate all the hard work. And again, I do not, it's like my wife going to work in a hospital. She's in her practitioner, I do not envy her. So I, at least from my perspective, and I've talked to Paul about it too. I know he appreciates it. So I think everybody does. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Patty, yeah, Patty, aye.
And thank you, everybody.
Patty, we need. Have a good weekend.
We need to meet Patty, keep us informed.
Yeah.
Keep us updated, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Anyway, thank you, Brad, for your work.
Thank you, Brad.
Have a great weekend, everybody. Nice job, Jess.
Thanks, thank you, Brad, thank you, Jess.
Thank you very much.
And good luck.